November 17, City-St. Mary's Council Meeting with the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's here tonight? Do you want to approve the minutes of October 20? Regular meeting? A motion by Jerry, seconded by Ned, to approve October 20 membership, or yeah, membership. Meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have the Budget Workshop Minutes of November 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Shane, seconded by Jerry, to approve the November 3rd Budget Workshop Minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. An executive session was held November 3rd during the council Budget Workshop regarding Personnel Matters. Next, we have a special presentation by our illustrious tax collector.
Illustrious?
Illustrious.
My name, for those that are not aware, apparently there are a few of you that don't know who I am. My name is Charles Bloom, elected tax collector, finishing up my 20th year. I've elected five times here in the city of St. Mary's to collect taxes. I'm here today to answer and explain and define my office about comments made at last council meeting. Council was asked to approve three resolutions concerning Burghheimer Tax Services, collection of local services tax. Now, from what I saw at that meeting, there was a clear misunderstanding of what local service taxes is. As a matter of fact, I don't think any of you knew what local services taxes are. So, I think the first place for me to start is to tell you what local services taxes is. Local service tax is a $52 charge for everybody that works in the city of St. Mary's. Not where you live, it's where you work, okay? That tax is collected by me. Local service tax is billed annually in January to any business self-employed individual doing business within the city limits. The tax bill is $52, all employees and self-employed individuals working or doing business in the city. $47 of that is allotted to the city of St. Mary's. $5 of that goes to the school district. If you earn less than $12,000, you do not owe the $47. But if you earn $1,000, you owe $5 to the school district. It is the employee's responsibility to deduct the local services tax from every employee. So, what is the local service tax used for? The question was asked here at council, nobody seemed to know what it was for, nobody seemed to know where we got the money. Local services tax is for fire and emergency services or for road construction. In 2007, before that, the city tax at that time was called the EMS, the Emergency Municipal Services Tax. It was $10. In 2007, the city raised it to $52, all payable in the first quarter. At that time, every business sent me money, $52 first quarter, we credited to all the individuals that paid, by name, by company. In 2008, there was a state law passed that said you needed to take that money, $1 at a time. So, that changed everything for us, because now we had to enter all of this four times a year. Every person that works in the city of St. Mary's had to have a report from an employer and we entered it by social security number and the amount that they paid. In 2013, I came to council and asked for 1.2% to collect that. In 2019, I asked for a 3/10 of a percent raise to 1.5% to collect that tax. Just let me tell you, to get 3/10 of a percent from the council at that time, I pretty much had to give up. But we got through that, so I got my money. Now that we all know what it is, I'd like to get to some, the discussion that council had about this tax. And the agreements that you all seemed to agree to, even though you weren't even sure what you were voting on. Some of the comments made about my office made my office seem very incompetent when it came to collecting this tax. And that's why I'm here tonight. The website from the city clearly shows what the taxes are that my office collects and what the local services tax was. During that discussion, Mr. Sarginger asked, "Why are we going to hire somebody to collect the taxes? Who's been collecting all these taxes all these years?" Mr. Schneider replied, "I guess the tax collector." But Bloom, I think. Well, Mr. Schneider, you were right. I do collect the local services taxes. Here's my contract with the city to collect them. Mr. Bagley, he asked, "If we have lowered the salary because of the tax collectors' less responsibilities, how much lower should we not pay the tax collector?" Well, the fact of the matter is, I have an agreement. Local services tax are a 511 tax. A 511 tax is something other than real estate taxes. So, I have a contract to collect it. The contract states, "Charles Bloom shall perform, prepare and maintain a local services tax role from taxpayers working in the city. Act as an assessor for the city to maintain integrity of the local services tax. Prepare and mail forms to the employers for the collection of the local services tax." That's what we do. A reason why you don't lower the salary of the tax collector is because in the state of Pennsylvania, the tax collector's salary is set by January 15th of the year of the election. So, the salary of tax collector for the term coming up now, of which a new tax collector will be there, that salary was set in December, had to be done before the May primary. Of which Jerry, you were there, you were on the tax board, you should have known that then when he asked that question. But you let it slide. Also, as city tax collector, in the state of Pennsylvania, we're a third-class city. The tax collector's salary, the tax collector is paid 1/3, 1/3 by the county, 1/3 by the city, 1/3 by the school district. The city is required to have the office upstairs. However, all of the supplies in that office are paid 1/3, city, county, and school district. Moving on with the conversation, Mr. Sarginger said, "How much is it costing the city to collect the tax?" Mr. Gregory stated that it would be, "Oh, 2% of whatever they collect." A general question and a good question. Somebody asked, "How much is collected?" Nobody knew. Nobody took the time to ask. Nobody called me, nobody asked anybody how much we collect. Well, I can answer that question. We collect about $360,000 total in local services tax. $325,000 a year goes to the city and $42,000 approximately goes to the school district. So, for me, I got $4,800 to collect that tax. Now, we're signing an agreement with Burghheimer. They're getting 2.5, 2.05% to collect. So, they're going to do the same job done by our city right now for an extra $1,700. Then things really got interesting. Somebody asked, "Why are we changing?" Well, Mr. Sword tried to tell everybody why this was needed to be done. He said, "It's because Burghheimer collects the earned income tax." He said, "They have the information needed to collect the tax." Well, that part's true. The part that isn't true is, then you said, "There's a lot of people not paying." That part's not true. There are plenty of people that pay. And also, Shane said, "So then we don't have the resources to collect it." Jerry's answer was, "No, we don't have the knowledge." Well, guess what? I don't know who 'we' is, but I know who has the knowledge, I have the knowledge. And here it is, right here. Here's the second quarter that we just got then collected. And there's $89,913 that we collected here. There's 6,765 people right here in this file that we put in, single-handedly. We put in four times a year. Every person that works in St. Mary's, maybe not everyone's not here, somebody could be working for cash, we may not know about it. And then you said, "It's because Burghheimer has the knowledge." I get my information from Burghheimer, okay? The other thing that we also do, I took an oath of office to do the tax collecting. I'm also the assessor. And then you wonder, "Well, I wonder how they know who that is?" Well, number one, I know because I get reports from Burghheimer. Also, if you started a business in St. Mary's and you put your name on a billboard, as the assessor, I see that. I assess to make sure you're on our rolls. If you put a business on a placard in a restaurant, and I'm eating in a restaurant and I see that, I look there and think, "Oh, I wonder if they're on our local services tax." And if you're not, I put you on there. I find people on Facebook. Took the job very seriously. For you guys, just to go out there and throw stuff out there and hope it sticks against the wall, I'm just telling you that I was really disrespected by what happened at that meeting last week. It wasn't right, it's not right. And then Mr. Sword told a funny story, everybody laughed. He said, "Well, I worked at the particle board plant in Mountain Dewitt. I never paid the tax, and I lived in St. Mary's. They never took it." Well, you know why? As I just told you. It's not where you live, it's where you work. And then you said you went to the paper mill, and they reported you, and then they had to pay the back. The back to who? Not the back to St. Mary's, it wasn't owed to St. Mary's. So, you didn't, you didn't, St. Mary's didn't lose any money. It wasn't my fault, I didn't miss you. If they missed you, that's their tax collector. That's their community, not this one. So, then finally, I'm going to just figure out and show you. Here are a list of 818 businesses that we have on file that do business, have done business, may do business in St. Mary's. 818 here. That's where this is all generated from. Since the first of the year, we've added 51 companies that do business here in St. Mary's. Now, you're probably thinking, "Yeah, 51 companies? I don't know if 51 companies that came to St. Mary's." No, you don't, because what happens is, a company that wants to do business in St. Mary's, they call our office, whether it be their tax preparer or somebody else, and they ask us. We have one employee in St. Mary's, he's going to sell insurance. But our company is out in California, but we're going to base him there. So, what happens? We add him to the local services tax. It's that simple. We make sure that we get it. So, what happened the other day? I felt, a quick story. I was pretty upset when I saw the meeting. And then a day or so later, I was raking leaves in my yard, and the guy pulled in my yard, and he said to me, he goes, "How long you been down in the city?" I said, "Ah, 20 years." They said, "Do they have any idea that you work there? Do they have any idea what you do?" I said, "Well, I think they do, but it sure didn't seem like it by the council meeting." So, I'm going to finish up with, now that we are wondering, how did we get here? This goes back to May of 20, of this year. On May 22nd, I got an email from the school district. And the school district is going to move their school occupation tax to Burghheimer to collect it. In the email, it said, "Do you have any suggestions or recommendations for the transfer to Burghheimer? I noticed that Burghheimer does local services tax collection for the entire district except the city of St. Mary's. Is there a reason that it's set up that way?" Well, I got back to the school and told them that the reason that that happens is because we've always done it. The rest of the district is done because it's a $10 collection. And in Kersey and the valley, it's just $10. So, Burghheimer collects five for the city, for their municipality, and five to the school district. Here in St. Mary's, because we get $13, we have a program that breaks out the $5 to go to the school and the other eight in that quarter comes to the city. I told the school district at that time that I thought that was going to be very confusing for all the companies, all the employees, and how, who is going to break out the monies. On 6/18, city finance manager Chuck Dunamaker was in my office. I sent this to the school district. He had a contract sent to him by Burghheimer for the collection of the city portion of the local services taxes. He told me that the school district is going with Burghheimer for their portion of the tax. At that time, I didn't think that was a good idea, but it had to make sense because you can't have the company sending $5 a year. I had questions. So, I called Burghheimer Tax, Bill Leonard. "City tax collector, I was approached by city finance manager Chuck Dunamaker concerning a switch to Burghheimer for the collection of the local services tax. Before I discuss it further with Chuck, I have some questions." One of my questions was, "How is this going to work? If the school district is going to go with Burghheimer and get their five bucks, where's our eight dollars coming from in that quarter? Or where's our 47? Who's going to break that out? We have a program that does that." Well, the next thing that I find out is that the school district's going there, I talked with Chuck, I talked to the guy from Burghheimer, and I pretty much washed my hands up. Interesting to note today, funny how things work. Today I get an email from Burghheimer. The ones that know everything, the ones that are doing all this, the ones that have all the information that my office doesn't have. "Hi bud, I hope all is well with you. I received an email from Ginger Williams asking about the timeline for the transition on the LSD, OAT, and PCT taxes. I was hoping that if you were available, I could give you a call to discuss your files of the three taxes. I will need these for so we can make the transition." They need my files, I don't need their files. So, that's all I got. I just want to tell you, I think that as a council, or anybody else that's going to be on council, when you're going to make decisions, you ought to ask the people that know what's going on. That was very unprofessional last time. And I'm sorry to be this way, but that's wrong.
Mr. Bloom, moving forward with the new tax collector, when these issues come up, do you think it would be a good idea to have a presentation like this made about this topic on the agenda? Before is the time.
Absolutely. But I've been in that office 20 years. 20 years in that office. Not one personal in council, not one city manager.
You should have been put on the agenda that night to explain that.
Absolutely, or at least asked. I didn't know it was on the agenda that night until that day.
Well, that's a problem.
And then I come here, and then I watched that the next day, I was shocked at what I heard. I don't know how, we could vote on stuff that we have no idea what we're voting on.
Right, you should have been on the agenda that night.
It made, it made me look like an idiot. And once a guy pulls in my driveway and says, "Don't they even know what you do?"
You're the major player.
I've been doing this, probably $200 million over 20 years turned over to this city, and every year, balanced to the penny. And then I get to the end of this, I only got six weeks left, and I had to come and clear that up. Thanks for your help.
I will say that prior to you being the tax collector, when they came after me for taxes, after I had been living here for 10 years.
And what tax did they come after?
I don't remember.
They didn't come after real estate? Must have paid you real estate.
I paid you real estate.
I'll bet you I know what they came after, your earned income tax, because you probably had the wrong code and your earned income tax is probably going to a different municipality when it shouldn't have been. Which is not the tax collector's fault. But they didn't come after you for local services tax. Because it didn't, it doesn't belong to us, it's where you work. People that, from DuBois, Pittsburgh, or anybody that works in St. Mary's, their local services tax gets paid here at St. Mary's. It doesn't go to Pittsburgh. Even the people that work in Kersey. And they said they work at Keystone. Their money doesn't go to Kersey.
I was also working here at the same time.
Well, and...
I wasn't paying.
And?
I wasn't paying.
What year? What year? Who are you working for?
I worked at 89, so it's been 90, 91, 93, 94.
You may be talking yourself into some unconsciousness.
Well, I wasn't here in 91 and 92, and at that time, it was $10. And I would still come out of your check in the first quarter. So, if you weren't paying it, it was only $10 back then, so...
So, this actually does take some income away from the tax collector, then?
Well, it takes income from the tax collector, but again, it's a 511 tax. 511 taxes, you have to have a separate contract to collect. Okay, the guy...
So, we were paying you one and a half?
We were paying you 1.5% to collect.
And now we're paying these guys 2%?
Now, you're going to pay them 2.05%. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm not saying that it's not going to work. I'm just saying that there's a reason why it all got switched, and it wasn't just because we didn't know what the hell we were doing. Well, you go back and watch the tape, you said, "We don't have the knowledge." You said, "We don't have the..."
I didn't realize you had the ability to collect any taxes.
I know you didn't, that's why you shouldn't make those accusations, because you didn't know. That's exactly my point.
Because they didn't catch me before, I thought that you still didn't have that information.
Jerry, I give you credit because you go and you look into things. But in this point, you didn't, and you made some accusations at that meeting that really kicked me off. Me, and my, me, and I have one other person who works with me, and she works her butt off to make sure that we get this stuff right. And that's the way it's been at the door for 20 years. Now, one more thing about the Burghheimer contract. In his contract, one of the things they want, they want taxpayer role additions from the current collector forwarded to Burghheimer. Do you know why they want that? Because I probably got what they don't have. And another thing, in their proposal, in their contract, you're going to pay them 2.05%. "Price is subject to the annual 5% adjustment based on economic trends." Who's going to keep track of that? I begged for 3/10 of a percent one time. And I had to stand in front of here like I was asking for a million dollars for 3/10 of a percent. We used to do it one time a year. Now, we put 7,000 people in this city into a program that we sit there day after day and type them in, by their social security number and how much money they get, and make sure it gets turned over. and make sure it gets turned over to the city. And they show up, and they want to, nobody asked, why do they get two-oh-five? Why, why do they, why are we only doing one-point-five now? It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. And as a guy that stood there and did his job, what he was elected to do, I just feel everybody else from there elected out to do what they're supposed to do. Thanks for noting.
Thanks, thanks, bud. Next, we have citizens' comments on agenda topics. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to wrapping up all the projects for this fiscal year. I'll probably have it done, everything done by the end of the month, especially with North, North Michael Street. Hopefully have that open too, after the curbing and sidewalks are completed. Winter weather is upon us, the road crews prepared to handle inclement weather when necessary. And also some key points on next year's budget. The budget is balanced, and no city taxes, tax increases will be recommended. And this is the fourth budget in a row recommending no tax increases on operations. Also, since two, two thousand twenty-one, revenue for the city has risen more than twenty-five percent, and the city debt has decreased by twenty-seven percent. I would like to credit our prudent financial management, our strong local workforce, and the support of the city council for this success. And I also wish to extend a heartfelt appreciation for all the city staff, boards, committees, and city council for your dedication and contribution to the process. I also wish to inform the community that the community pool will be closed this, next summer to initiate the reconstruction project, following the results of the comprehensive feasibility study performed earlier this year. The study highlighted significant deficiencies in the existing pool structure, and recommended against reusing it. To facilitate this project, capital fundraising campaign will commence in December. We will see contributions from individual donors, local businesses, and ta, uh, and grant providers. I believe this approach works best, that it minimizes any burden upon the taxpayer, while it lessens the chance of the city increasing its debt. To enhance community involvement, the city will form a committee dedicated to the capital campaign. We will invite any interested volunteers to reach out to the Parks and Rec Department for more information on how they can contribute. Reconstruction project will be undertaken in multiple phases, with each phase dependent upon availability of secured funding. The outlined phases include demolition of the existing pool, construction of the new, new pool, enhancement of the surrounding grounds, and renovation, um, related, uh, for the facility. The total budget for this project will be set at two-point-eight million. The new facility will feature an ex, uh, a new slide and zero-entry design, ensuring accessibility and enjoyment for all ages. Once the planning models and graphics are finalized, the city will share them with the pub, public to keep them informed about the important community project. Also, uh, just got word today that been reappointed to the PA Governor's Advisory Council on Rural Affairs, which actually provides a voice for our area. And city offices will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, which will be Thursday and Friday, as we celebrate Thanksgiving. And finally, wish to have everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving next week.
I have a question, Joe. On the, on the street system, uh, we all caught up with the bills and stuff on that for the four sixty that's put in this year? Everything's caught up with that?
I would have to double-check that.
But we're pretty close.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 'Cause, uh...
It's a big project.
It, it was very huge, it, it was probably one of the biggest we've ever done. And actually, this year, we spent, uh, a lot of, a lot of funding was expended on infrastructure.
Anybody else have any question? Thanks, Joe, treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Total revenue for the general fund as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five is at seven-point-zero-seven million, or seventy-nine percent of the budget. Last year's at seven-point-two, or eighty-two percent, and in twenty-three was seven-point-three, or eighty-six percent of the budget. Expend, expenditures for the general fund as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, are eight-point-zero-seven million, or ninety percent of the budget. And twenty-four is at seven-point-six percent, I mean, seven-point-six million, or eighty-seven percent of the budget. And twenty-three was at six-point, seven-point-six million, or ninety-one percent of the budget. Total real estate tax collection as of the end of October are at ninety-eight percent, and in twenty-four, and in twenty-three, were the same at ninety-eight percent. Earned income tax collection as of October thirty-first is at eighty-eight percent of the budget, and in twenty-four, it was at eighty-six percent, and in twenty-three was at ninety-two percent. Pension plan saw an increase in value for the month of October. That's your treasurer's report.
Thanks, Joe.
Ned, just briefly, you said the pool will be closed next season. Joe, is that because it is considered, because it's been unsafe to use, or it's just become too expensive to run? What is the decision based on?
The decision to close the pool was based on not being in compliance or concerns, and also...
Without a compliance to satisfy state regulations? Is that what you're telling me?
Safety and compliance issues are also a concern. Uh, those are all within the feasibility study. Especially since the pool backlash does not meet standard codes, it's current codes and standards, and since additionally, everything, uh, with everything being the way it's stored, and with the children's pool being the same recirculation system, uh, it's not, which is designed not to current codes, especially since it's been closed down, so...
For the safety of the project?
Yeah, that, that's the...
I think it's, it's losing like two inches of water a day as well, so...
And it has been, that's why I wondered why this year was...
Well, I think it was, it wasn't leaking that bad last year, but this year, they made a lot of repairs, and it didn't really, still leaking a lot, so I think it was just, I don't know, kind of beyond fixing at this point, from my understanding anyways.
Let us lead, legislative action. Consider for publication an ordinance providing for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to, uh, um, issue the levy, levy assessment taxes, ordinance number three-forty-six for twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second. Got a motion by Shane, seconded by Tony, to consider for publication the ordinance providing for the levy assessment taxes for twenty-twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna say that there is no increase in this year levy on of the taxes.
True.
Yeah, it's just, just need one every year, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, a resolution for the twenty-twenty-six city preliminary budget for various funds.
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-six budget for various funds for the city of St. Mary's.
It would be a speech for publication.
Yeah, it's just for publication. Jerry? I'll second. Got a motion by Jerry, seconded by Tony, to consider for publication a resolution for the twenty-twenty-six city preliminary budget for various funds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, consider for adoption a resolution twenty-five dash twenty, local share account grant application for the St. Mary's community pool.
Thank you, Mayor. So as Joe mentioned earlier, this, um, is a local share account grant application for phase one of the community pool reconstruction.
What's phase one again? Karen or Tom?
Phase one, I believe, was demolition and construction.
And that's gonna cost a million dollars?
It's gonna cost probably more, but this is a good fresh start.
I mean, you said two-point-eight million?
For the total project, yes.
So what's the one million dollars gonna cover? Just the demolition?
Uh, be probably demolition and maybe at least half of construction, but it's a gr, it's a great start, uh, in campaigning.
So we don't know what this here is actually gonna cost?
Excuse me?
We, we don't know what the pool is gonna cost.
The budget said it...
We don't have a definite plan of, we don't have a definite cost of what...
Yes, we do.
This pool is, I never seen it. What, what, what are you gonna put up there?
It's...
Which, which one are you gonna put up there? You haven't told me. Don't tell me you did, Joe, you didn't. I don't like, I don't know what kind of pool you're gonna put up there.
It's gonna be a rectangular pool with a slide and zero entries, so that, as I put in my report, to show that it's accessibility for everyone. And once all the, the, all the graphics and designs are made, they'll be pushed out for the public to assist with the capital campaign.
So you really don't know what it's gonna cost?
Two-point-eight million.
No, that's, I'm sorry.
It's just a estimate, correct?
Well, no, that's actually what...
But you can't go over it, right? Correct. A lot of budget can't go over it.
There's no budget. It's not built into any budget, it's an estimate.
That's all I see, just the, Joe figures down.
You, uh, so we don't turn into a, a tax situation? Would you clear this up, or something?
There is, there's a quote that was submitted, and that's why this is all, all based upon the funding secured through local donations, individual donors, businesses, and grant providers, to minimize the burden upon the taxpayer, if any. Trying to secure funding as, as we go through phases as funding is being secured. So, the quote was given at two-point-eight million for rectangular pool, plus the grounds, plus renovation of the facility, which will be probably given over time.
This is just, this is just a five grand, Ned.
I know that.
Okay.
I know that, but you're, you're applying for one million, but in what you just said, you didn't include any of the removal of the old...
Well, one million's our max, we can't go over that.
One million's your what?
It's all we're allowed to ask for.
We're only allowed to ask for...
But, but in the thing that you just quoted, you said it's the, the building of a, a pool, the grounds, the ba-ba-ba-ba, but you didn't include in your statement just that you just made, the removal of the old pool.
Well, that's demolition.
Huh? You didn't put it, you didn't say that in your...
Yes, I did.
You did not.
You did.
Would you like to hear the recording?
I would love to.
The only thing I, 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 I just...
On this, you have a thing that says two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for demolition. That seems like a lot to tear on a pool.
Yeah, exactly.
No, but this seems like a lot.
We're not nineteen-sixty anymore, sorry.
Could we get somebody that's gave us these prices to do this, or what?
That's all we gotta put, we have to start somewhere. We don't have the money, we can't do it at all.
I know, but thank you.
I'll, I'll forward you the quote receipt.
That, there's a company that...
A motion to approve twenty-five dash twenty.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Tony, seconded by Shane, to approve twenty-five dash twenty resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one, local share account grant application for the St. Mary's Senior Center.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Senior Center, regarding grant application to acquire a piece of property that has a building on, to relocate the Senior Center. Uh, the center is requesting the grant application due to the increasing costs at its current location and these limitations. This new building will allow the Senior Center to expand its activities to a wider range of the public, and in connection with the building acquisition, uh, the Senior Center has identified some improvements that need to be made to the property to make it more ADA accessible. So this is not just the acquisition of the property, but also includes, um, some building equipment, um, which they have provided estimates for, um, I have on, in my file.
Do they own the building that they're currently in?
No. No, they currently lease the building that they're operating.
It's the, it's the bottom floor, the, I don't know if it's Canadesis or...
It's the Marion style.
Marion style.
Do they have a place that they, that they're looking at? Is that what this is about?
They do have a property in mind.
Where, where am I at?
This is the old Edgewood, behind Subway.
Oh, out on Highway.
I'll motion approve number twenty-five dash twenty-one.
I'll second that, Tony.
Got a motion by Tony, seconded by Shane, to approve resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next, we have resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-two, local share account grant application for St. Mary's Little League softball.
Thank you, Mayor. This grant application is for the St. Mary's Little League Softball Association, uh, to construct a press box and storage, or press box slash storage shed at Field Four at Fencing Park. I believe that's the field near Slind Road, so that'd be the rear field. Previous to, or they've, um, come up with a multi-phase, multi-phase plan to upgrade this field, um, as well as some of the amenities at the field. And, um, if council's not already aware, is that they installed new dugouts, new fencing, and a backstop up this field.
We'll make a motion to approve local share grant application number twenty-five twenty-two.
One quick question. Is twenty-five thousand dollars going to be enough to do what they're asking? Or are they gonna put up the rest if they need more?
Uh, they are willing to contribute to the project. So they're, this, I guess in other words, it won't cover the entire...
Okay. I'll second.
Got a motion by Jerry, seconded by Tony, to approve resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-two, St. Mary's Little League softball grant application. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have twenty-five dash twenty-three, termination of EDC agreement.
Counsel, this agreement was in place previously to where, uh, funding would be streamed from the city to the EDC Corporation. Due to the fact of a lot of redundancy in operations between the two entities that we do actually in-house, um, just recommend termination of the agreement to move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four, and then, twenty-three, termination of the...
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Steve, seconded by Shane, to terminate resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-three, termination of EDC agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-four, amending the procedures for promotions within the St. Mary's Police Department.
Counsel, uh, the St. Mary's Civil Service Code was reviewed by the Police Civil Service Commission, uh, and they recommended some, they recommended procedures that somewhat changed for hiring internally, uh, for, especially with the upcoming sergeant position, due to the fact that there would be a vacancy with Mr. Schaefer becoming chief at the first of the year. Um, and what they recommended was... And what they recommended was, uh, reducing the oral panel from five to three, uh, which is cost savings for us. And also the procedure of every applicant taking a written and oral examination, and where the averages of the two will be to, will be set forth. So it would've been moved forth with the recommendations that's provided by the Police Service Commission.
I'd motion to approve resolution 25 dash 24.
Got a motion by Tony, seconded by Steve, to approve resolution 25 dash 24. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the ward of bid for the 2024 CDBG Historic Preservation Project. Matt's gonna enlighten us on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Community Economic Development Department solicited for bids for this project. It's the 2024 CDBG Historic Preservation Project. It was advertised until the 24th, with the bids being due on November 14th. The bids were open on November 14th, and we received three bids for this project, um, in no particular order. Summit Overhead Doors Incorporated submitted a bid of $39,363. Top Line Builders submitted a bid of $68,000. And Pella Window and Doors submitted a bid of $40,000, $159. After reviewing the bids and paperwork, um, I'm requesting City Council award the project to Summit Overhead Doors Incorporated for $39,363.
Matt, could you just, um, go into a little bit more detail on what this project is for exactly? What's the building?
Uh, this is the, uh, currently it's fashionably, fashionably late. I believe it's referred to as the Weiss Building.
Mm-hmm.
It's the second building north of the intersection of Mills Street-
Okay.
On the west side of South St. Mary's Street.
And this is to replace windows, or to-
Replace the windows.
Okay.
Yes. Stack Bowl, yes.
It's got like two entrances.
Are these, windows gonna look exactly like the ones that are there, or?
They will be comparable.
Comparable?
Yes.
They, they have to-
Yes.
Match according to historic-
Correct. The, uh, Historical Museum Commission did, has approved this project.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Summit Overhead Doors.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Tony, seconded by Steve, to approve the 2024 CDBG Historic Preservation Project to Summit Overhead Doors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the data center ordinance considering referral to the planning commission.
I, I've, uh, looked at this quite a bit, and, you know, we should probably have an ordinance of our own. So one of the things that we all need to do is contact our state legislatures and tell them that we need something done at the state level to prevent the state from being penalized by one of these things. You know, they've already built a few of these different places. Nobody's suffered really yet because they have proven their own power in a lot of places. But at one point, if they don't, there's gonna be a problem. And I think our state legislatures need to have some, I, I hate state regulations because sometimes we chase businesses away. But this is a business we've been very cautious about. Softwear legislators are fine. Hoping to hear back from the planning commission about what they had to say.
They haven't listened to this yet. They haven't been on this yet.
No. That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to refer this ordinance to the planning commission for further review and, and, uh, any suggestions for changes or revisions.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Shane, seconded by Jerry, to refer the, to the planning commission, the data center ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next topics for discussion? Nothing? Citizens' comments on non-agenda topics? Yes, please speak, get up, yeah, speak into the microphone, please identify yourself, please, so we know. I know who you are, but they know everybody else.
I'm Molly Redinger, and I'm here tonight, um, to represent people concerning the community pool. I've come to as many meetings as I can when I know that the pool's being a topic of discussion. Last time I was here, I believe only one of you have even attended the pool in recent years. And, um, I just, I guess I'm here to just express my extreme disappointment that the decision's already made to close the pool next summer. I feel like there's a group of people that have been reaching out, wanting to be a part of a conversation. So it's really hard to have meetings like this because we, as a townspeople, can't comment when you're having a discussion. All we can do is stand up here and talk to you. I don't feel like it means a lot to most of you sitting up there because it's not something that you or your family frequents. And I, I just think it's such a huge part of our community, and all of a sudden tonight, it's just like, oh, we're gonna close the pool, and then we're gonna work to raise money. Why aren't, why aren't we working to raise money, doing what we can, again, to, to put a band-aid on it? I'm one of those people that doesn't think that things can't be done. I know someone that's a, a mechanical engineer that just can fix just about anything and doesn't look at it as though it can't happen. So I guess I'm asking you, as council people, to stand up for us a little bit more in this community who I feel like we don't have a voice, you know, I've, yeah.
I'd just like to say something. I think that the, the problem with this is we got behind the eight ball here.
I, I agree with you.
Over the years, we should've been doing this 10 years ago and it didn't happen. And 15 years ago, they did a study, and then nothing happened because nobody spoke up and did anything there. And now we're at a point with no return, and that's what I feel. My granddaughter attended that pool constantly, every summer, and I, I, she's gonna miss it this year. I'm sorry about that for her, but I don't think there's anything else that we could do.
And I mean, I feel like as a community member, I, I, I just feel like I don't even know enough about all the things that are wrong with it. I mean, I, I go every day, well, I would say about, average five days a week in the summer when it's nice. Yeah, there are issues, you know, there are things here, I mean, i- i- but I guess it's, there's, you know, is there anything that the people in the community, even, even volunteers? You don't even have to pay people, some of these people to, can we do anything to band-aid it so we can raise the money? To get, and not just put something in, like, and, and I don't know what it's gonna look like, but like, we don't just want a rectangle with a slide. Because, again, you're gonna spend all this money, and then who's gonna come and attend? Like, people don't wanna go to Bendigo. Do you know what I mean? I'm not, no offense to Bendigo. I mean, you know, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but I'm just saying, you have something there with the, the size of that pool alone. When, when you go on a hot day and there's 240 people attending that pool, like, it's crowded. There's, yeah.
Do you, uh, in your conversations, we have gone over in the summer, we're losing 2,000 freshwater gallons a day. Like, me personally, I don't think ethically that's okay, especially in a summer like we just had. You know, there might've been an instance where, you know, we could've ran short on water, um, you know, as a city.
Right.
Do you think that putting band-aids on would be the correct thing to do?
Has anybody spoken to the city engineer? He's a civil engineer.
When we had the meeting in June, um, the maintenance guy there said that he had already put in several tens of hundreds of hours.
They did patch like 18 different holes in the spring.
And it was still leaking.
And, and I, in my patch, I mean, they had, um, I can't remember the welding outfit, like, basically professional welders come in, cut out pieces of rusted metal, weld in new pieces. And they did that 18 different places, and when they filled the pool up, it was still losing two inches of water a day, you know, the, the-
But did we involve this, so the city engineer was involved? He's a civil engineer.
I'm not sure if the city engineer was involved, but I know we-
We paid somebody, didn't the last guy come from Texas?
Well, I, I recall, I recall when the person who maintained the pool, he said that the guys that did the welding said there's nothing left to weld.
At some point, the pool actually closed to do any kind of renovation, so this is just a starting point.
But we don't even have the money. We've no, we have nothing, you know, and we've been wanting, we've been asking to do things, we've been asking for a committee. We've been wanting to, you know, to, to, to do anything, but we don't really, we haven't been getting answers. We don't, we don't even get responses sometimes. And so I guess that's all I'm asking is that, it's like, I, I feel like, oh, the pool's closed for next summer, and then we're hoping to, to raise money. And I, and I thank you for finally putting something together to get some money going, but I feel like we're closing it, and that's, that's it, and nobody can say anything about it, so.
You said, "We-"
Yes.
"-don't want a rectangle with a sliding board." And, um, that leaves me with the impression that anything short of a small water park isn't satisfactory, what?
No, I mean, again, I realize the size of the pool that we have now, like, if you've ever gone to, like, zero-entry pools, for instance. Like, I was here for the presentation when the last guy was here. The entire section that he wanted to put in was basically zero-entry. You can't swim in that. I think it's awesome for the, I mean, I, I have kids that are seven and nine. Would I have loved a zero-entry pool when my kids were babies and toddlers, or for elderly or handicapped? It's fantastic, but it also, you get 240 people in a pool like that, there's not swimming room. Do you understand what I'm saying? So when he, I'm just going based off that man's presentation, you know, the whole one side of that pool was gonna just be walking, that's how you'd walk in, and then you had the little narrow section for swimming. You know, the majority of those kids, I mean, I, I don't have actual numbers, but you, let's just say 70% of the kids that go there are swimmers and not toddlers or any- People aren't going to wanna go to a pool, even though it's new, if there's no room to swim and enjoy it.
It's almost not worth doing unless it can be done to some people.
Not, again, I'm not asking for a water park, like, the first, when they first presented the 17 million, the 15 million, like, that to me was, you know, I'm like, oh my gosh, that's like going to, you know, a, a water park somewhere. We just really have a decent size, have a sliding board. The diving boards are a huge hit for those kids. And, and unfortunately, what I've seen is that when they renovate, the diving boards go out, and they're not there available for those kids anymore, so.
There, there are several things involved with that. I've visited several pools in different communities as I traveled around. And a lot what I saw was the size of the pool that they used to have struck considerably.
Sure.
Okay?
Right.
And some of the reasons is financing. The other thing we looked at, and I'm sure, I don't know if you heard it as part of our conversations, but the size of our population here in the city of St. Mary's, as the size of pool that a, a population or a size has, you usually don't even have a pool. Communities are that as small as we are. So we'd be lucky to have a pool, and I hope that we have one again.
See, I would, I mean, I-
If we wanna have a pool.
I think there's a lot of communities that are-
We have to have.
Sorry. I just, I think there's a lot of communities smaller than ours that have pools. I mean, you know, I mean, even, even Ridgeway's got a pool. Now, granted, it's small, but like, I, you know, I, I lived in the town of Indiana, PA, which I think is comparable to here, except it has a college. They renovated a pool. In fact, I've been, I, I know the guy that was in charge of the renovations. I'd love to talk to him and connect, I, I just, I, I'm just-
One of the other things you have to consider, is something that we have to consider here in the city of St. Mary's every time we do something. I visited a pool that was huge, a very small community, and I looked around and says, "How did this pool get here?" They had a large contributor, somebody that has a large factory there. We lost all the big factory contributors here in the city of St. Mary's.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't have those people to make those large contributions like when your pool was built many years ago. We don't have those companies anymore, and we're not gonna be able to raise that kinda money as easy as we did back then with comparable amount of money as we had then. And it's gonna be hard for us to do a lot of projects here in the city because of that.
And I, I mean, I know people with taxes, but I also had conversations with somebody that, that, again, they don't go to the pool, but they're like, if, if that, they know how important that pool is to our community, that they would be okay, that their taxes would go, you know, to something like that. And, and I know that we look at it, that it's losing money, and I, again, I'm not a financial person, although I get, but everything that we do for our community doesn't need to make money. This is a service to our community, and, um, I think a very, very big service to our community.
We appreciate the fact that those types of services are not meant for cities to make money, but they also are not meant for them to lose their pants.
Sure. And like I said, I just, I, I just wish that there would be more conversation about if there's anything that volunteers and people can do, that the, the knowledge of the people, the mechanical engineers, the civil engineers, anything you can do to band-aid it while we raise this money, to then make it so that you have a timeline in place that says it's gonna take us, you know, a year to, to put in this new pool. I feel like, I just, I, you know, before, like you said, we waited so long to, to do anything about it. Well, now, we're just gonna close it, and now, who knows how long it's gonna sit there until anything gets done, so.
The problem with band-aiding everything is, say we put $500,000 in abandoning that pool, there's $500,000 we could've put in to fixing, to putting it into the new pool.
And I'm, and I-
Why, why would we, why would we spend, why would we spend money to fix something that we're gonna tear out? That is stupid.
And I-
People, people would look at us, us and say, "What are you guys, nuts? You know, you're gonna tear that pool out, but you're gonna fix it. You can't do it."
We need some volunteers to find-
But that's what I'm saying. Have we asked, have we asked for volunteers? I mean, people, some people might give their time if they know that you're gonna close that pool.
You still need material. And, and people are gonna, people are gonna say, "Why would I contribute to keeping a pool open that you're gonna tear down in a year or two?"
I think it's for them to, I think that's-
That's a waste, that's a waste of money.
But if it's for some, if, if it means something to those people, you know-
It's common sense. I'm sorry.
You're allowed to, we can disagree, and, but like I said, I just-
Ridgeway is only nine or 10 miles away.
But it, I, you know, I-
I mean, we're, we're starting this, you know, the committee now, if you get in touch with Danny, I'm sure, you seem like you would be very-
I am, I am interested, but I'd like to know more about it, too. You know, like, what am I raising money for? Is it a pool that I'm gonna wanna believe in and go to and be a part of? And I feel like, I feel like a lot of us have been left in the dark about what's happening, and now we're just making these decisions, and the rest of us that enjoy that pool, you know, um, like I said, I'm, I'm not asking to band-aid it forever, and, and, like, I'd like almost specific details. You know, that, that baby pool was closed all last summer, and, um, you know, at first you heard some grumblings, and then what you saw was a lot of kids grow into that big pool and learn quicker how to adapt and enjoy that, you know. I mean, honestly, 'cause someone was like, "Oh, I didn't wanna, I wish I wouldn't have joined if I'd have known that," and the next thing you know, they're kids learning, again, how to swim and, and be in the big pool. They adapted to it, you know, they, so.
What wants the senior hardship to give opportunities?
Exactly. But I, I guess that's what I'm just saying. I, I just wish that they would take, without, without just closing the pool and saying, "We wanna raise money now." I, I still would like to see some things being done, talk to the city engineer or, you know, some other people, the construction people in town, ask for volunteers.
We're, we're trying to find ways to raise money to, to get this all paid for, and that's the biggest thing, is the money.
Right.
And you, you have to close it to repair it, or to rebuild it, or whatever. So it is gonna be a time where it will be, it'll have to be closed.
Right, but we have, we have nothing right now. So that's all, I'm just asking you, like I said, to, to look into it more, and what can you do, you know, what, what's unsafe about it that could get you through one more summer, so that come August, you have some money and you're like, "Now we can move." You know what I mean? I feel like we're not gonna be moving for a really long time now.
I think, I think one of the things that we need to remember is having the pool closed, I think, does provide a little bit more of a inspiration or kick to get stuff moving, too. So if somebody saw, "Well, the pool's still open, why would I consider donating money to a new pool? It looks like it's fine." You know, if it's, if it's closed and it can't open, somebody's gonna be more willing to, well, we gotta get this fixed.
Coming in more straightforward with it, if people knew for sure that this is what is happening, this is the timeline, this is what's in place, 'cause, so I, I would, I understand where you're coming from, but I would disagree with, with that, I mean, but.
I'm gonna make one statement, and this is over with, all right?
Sure.
We inherited this. This should've been done 20 years ago. So now we have to make a decision, and I'm sorry, but that's our decision. Molly, we can't, we can't do anything else. I mean, we have to look at the big picture. And the big picture, the smart thing would be to close the pool, get a fundraiser going, which we are gonna do, and get this over, and get this going. Sitting here talking about it isn't doing anything.
Like I said, I'm just very disappointed in your decision, and I wish that you just would, like I said, keep it open one more year and, and have the fun, start the fundraising now and keep it open, and ask for volunteers. I think a lot of people were left in the dark, so, thanks.
Yep. Anybody else under citizens' comments on non-agenda topics? Council comments? Shane?
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe first day of rifle season.
Good year.
Happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody gets lucky of hunting season, and we don't care to get a deer, but I'm gonna call every day, and if we would, it's a common trip that we have. The other thing I wanna say is, there's a lot of things in the city that a lot of people don't realize the amount of time that some people here in council and other places have put in to try and do different things and be successful in the future. And hopefully, long-term, we can do things that were kicked down the road before. This council over the last four years has done a lot of things to try and improve those things. This is one of them. We've improved a lot of different things, and this is one of the things that we're trying to get, get a handle on.
Thanks, Jerry. Nick? Joe?
Happy Thanksgiving. See y'all next month.
Steven?
I'd like to congratulate the winners of the recent election, the Republicans who will be moving to the board, McRoe, Alex Landau, and Chuck Blackett.
Tony?
No.
Next council meeting will be Monday, December fifteenth at seven PM. Somebody wanna adjourn the meeting?
I'd make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion by Steve, seconded by Jerry to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.